Listen to all this.
No.
We won't be three hours.
Two, four.
Yeah. That's fine.
Start off on the right.
Sam, you can be here for three hours, but Jeff and I are gonna adjourn. So Randy's got about fifteen minutes.
Health assessment meeting? Did y'all go to either one of those? All right, never mind. We got that today.
I didn't know anything about it. Health assessment meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, we're live. Okay, let's call a meeting to order. We're gonna, we're gonna keep moving. Minutes of reports received and filed?
We have the April 2015 clerk fees and the March and April 2015 sheriff fees and the April 2015 recorder deeds fees.
Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events?
The Central County Health Assessment Partnership. I think that would do to discuss the health assessment needs for Cole County.
Oh, is that the one in the Capitol Region?
Yeah. That's, they had two meetings.
Okay.
Today's eleven thirty. You've got Cole County Communities in the morning. It's at the Chamber, six forty-five A.M. Cole County Extension tomorrow night. Negate Coffee Friday morning. And no radio this week. We gotta switch to next week.
Yeah, we're fifteenth.
I'll see if I can make that one yet, Sam.
Okay.
I got breakfast that next Friday morning. I don't know how long that takes.
I can, I can do it. That's not a problem.
Well, I might be able to swing out there.
Okay.
Red Cross Golf Tournament is out Friday, too. All right. That's all I got.
Got a sleep meeting today.
That's all I have. Okay. Might have done what you had, so. Okay, we're good. We're gonna skip around our agenda. So we're, Mr. Chris Estes?
I've got another contract, excuse me, for appraisal services for commercial property buildings. The reason we have two of them is the first company didn't have the power to handle all of them, so I had to go with the second company. And the reason I went with the first company on the five properties I did is because I dealt with them before and I'm familiar with their work. But we didn't have to go with the second company. You did the rest I had.
Who is the second company?
It's, well, they're actually, now I can't think of the name of it. Chris Jordan's office.
Okay.
Kyle Newland has an office in his building and he's a member of the Jeff City Chamber and does work here in Cole County, but they also have an office in Columbia.
Moore and the Shire. Real estate appraisers?
Uh, I think that's, that's the one in Columbia, I guess.
Out there off of Hyde Park?
Yeah. But Kyle is actually based down here in Jeff City. Oh, yeah, the Hyde Park, that's his Jeff City address.
Oh, Chris. Sam, you gotta keep it real dead.
He's bigger than me.
Knows we're the last ones. You think that's all we're gonna need?
I think that's all I'm gonna need.
Okay.
And then Jill looked over at the contractor and she was like...
I did.
All right, I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
Okay.
I make motion, we signed a contract with Kyle Newland with the contractor.
More in track?
Yeah, more in track. Thank you.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will bring you a copy over. I had the first part edition printed, but I had them add a place for all of the signatories to sign on it, and that one still needs to be printed off.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
That's our service.
We're gonna jump around, too, 'cause we're gonna go to the discussion of EMS protocol smartphone apps.
Morning, gentlemen. Currently, right now, currently, right now, with our protocols, we end up printing up protocol books, which is roughly how, tells us how we do everything in our treatments. What we do with our protocol books is we try to keep these as updated as we can, but as you can see, there's a lot to it. We end up having to get these copied, updated. We try to update them as often as we can, but what ends up happening is, is by the time we end up getting one updated, something new comes out, we need to update something else. And what ends up happening is, is we have to constantly continually reprint out these books. And so what we've done in the past is we've just tried to keep this down to a yearly print. Costs us roughly, to print out fifteen of those, to put on our trucks, have a few for the dispatch office, and a few floating around. Ends up costing us roughly about $650 for every time we print out fifteen copies of these. Then these copies end up going out, we end up changing them, then we have to go ahead and reprint these out. There's nothing wrong with having a paper copy. It works well. They're fairly durable. Brown Printing has been doing these for us, and they do good work. The problem is, is we need to keep these things updated, every quarter at least. And the problem we're having with that, again, is just cost. With our transitions that we're starting to move forward, we're moving, we're starting our transitions away from our tough books and looking forward in the next few years into moving into iPads. With our iPads, there now have been applications, apps that you can purchase, that allows you to have these apps online. They're updated very quickly, so we don't have to print these up. We can update them shortly after the protocols are printed. It's real quick. It's easy to be able to find the protocol that you want. And gentlemen, if you flip through that, you've gotta remember, there are dozens and dozens of medications, procedures, policies, protocols. It's very thick, and at the heat of the moment, to have a paramedic, to have to flip through that, find out exactly what they need as quickly as possible, that's the game. Not only that, but those protocols are usually always stuck in the truck. If they're on scene in someone's house, something like that, and they need to refer to something, it's rather difficult. Times have changed where now everybody, or most people are now carrying smartphones with them. I think it would be very convenient to be able to have an application where they could real quickly just grab their phone or their iPad, Android app, anything like that, and be able to quickly look up these protocols.
What's the cost savings?
Well, there's, I've, I looked up three different companies. I got a response back from two of them. What we have cost-wise is we get the cheapest option that we have currently out there is roughly about $1,750 a year. This allows us to upgrade these continuously as often as we want. We can do it every month. We can do it every week, and then everybody's protocols are up to date. The other service that is there, on the other page, is roughly about $6,000 upfront and then twenty percent every year after that, which would be roughly about $1,100 per year after that. And it really would just kind of depend on how far in the future you want to look. I foresee probably in three years, there's going to be better services out there. Things, you know, technology is going to change, so I don't see an advantage of sticking it out for five years through a single contract to see if one will pay out better than the other. But it looks like about $1,750 currently is a average price of, per year, for this application. Now, this will be strictly internal. This is given to Cole County EMS employees where they can download it. It's not meant to go public. It's just meant to stay internal so we can keep our applications, our protocols, policies, and patient care up to date.
Somebody doesn't already have an app before then? We can't be the only EMS around?
No. Matter of fact, this is, there are several other services that I was introduced that have this. It's kind of the new merging trend that's kind of, that's going around.
But somebody else invented it. We can just...
Well, I mean, we, we already have our policies. We already have our protocols, and our, our protocols are for Cole County EMS. It's only for us. We can't take someone else's protocols and use them because they are designed specifically for our county, for our hospitals, for our services, for our equipment. There is no overstate protocol that Missouri uses. We tend to use our local information and local protocols based after what our medical director approves for us.
Yeah, because we have different equipment, maybe than Boone County or something like that.
Exactly.
You really can't get a, you can't get a program that would work for Boone County and Cole County.
Not in Missouri, because Missouri does not carry state protocols. Some states do. Go to New Hampshire, North Carolina, they have statewide protocols.
So, why, why can't we just put this in a document and put it on the tough books?
And that is what we have right now. We have everything printed into a PDF that we keep updated. They are able to bring that down. The problem is, is on the smartphone side, it's very hard, it's very complicated to flip through. I mean, you're looking at almost 180 pages right there. Our next protocol update will be well over 220 pages. It's very hard with the applications that we have right now to be able to quickly search through that stuff.
So are they pulling it up on their tough book?
Yes, they can pull it up on the tough book, but most of the people right now will rather just grab the protocol book instead of using that because going, flipping through it, through the tough book is a little slow.
So how is the app gonna make it faster?
With the app, it allows you to scroll through it faster, to be able to search much faster than what we have now. I mean, you guys have all used like a PDF viewer, where if you're trying to search for something, you hit F3, Ctrl+F, find, then you type in what you're looking for, and then scroll through that. The application is just much faster. It's, we got kind of a little picture in there of roughly how it looks. I've got an application downloaded if you guys wanna view it. I can show you on my own phone. It just goes through quite a bit quicker than trying to scan through it like a PDF.
And keep in mind, we're just laying the initial groundwork for the transitioning away from tough books to tablet iPad technology, much more cheaper than tough books, as we all know. So this is an early fundamental step in converting to that.
So as we transition to iPads, is there a special iPad for EMS or whatever that's five times as expensive as everything else like the tough books were?
No. No, I feel just a regular iPad will be just fine in the future.
I think it's a little pricey, and I'd like to wait on it. I mean, I, everything, there's all kinds of conveniences, but, I mean, this isn't a saving, it's a cost. I don't know, it seems like there might be some way to, I don't know, and I don't have that much knowledge, but to be able to index some of that or something so that you could find it quicker, maybe through a PDF or something.
And that's what we've done so far. And it's there, it works, it's slow, it's tedious.
When's the next printing of this, dude?
Uh, I am wanting to print the next version out probably in the next two, sixty to ninety days. So we'll...
I suggest using a binder instead of doing this, and then you can, if you've got one page that changes, you can change one page instead of 250 pages.
And we've done that in the past, and it doesn't survive. They're just, they just fall apart too quick.
I'm pretty hard on binders, and I've had some that have been with me for longer than Wi-Fi I had.
(laughing).
Is that out loud?
Yeah, that was recorded, yeah. That'll make the news tonight.
Gotta put duct tape on some of them.
I like that one. That's good.
The binders. Duct tape on the binders.
And Jeff, typically what we've done is they will just reroll those binders for us. When we update them, we'll just slip in new pages, take the old stuff out, and they'll just go ahead and respool those up for us. The problem is, is trying to keep all of those up to date.
You're not redoing the whole thing every time.
No, what we tried to do, what we've done in the past, yes, we'll add 20 pages, fix it up, and then the next following year, then we'll print out a new one because table of contents, everything needs to get fixed and updated, so. But we try to just do incremental changes throughout the year. We just add it to the back.
I mean, I would assume that most of your guys that have been with you for a while know what those protocols are.
Yes.
And don't, don't reference that book very often, but maybe on occasion, they may have to pull it out just to see what...
Yes, and it might not be so much as what the protocol reads. They might have questions on medications, 'cause a lot of our medications are weight-based, and so they'll flip through, find the medication that they need, how much the patient weighs, and be able to refer to that as quickly as possible.
Sounds like we're gonna stay with this for a while.
I understand.
Well, you guys can vote me.
No.
So, did you ask Jeff?
The PDF format just seems to be the easiest for everybody to deal with.
Doesn't mean they might not vote for it.
We couldn't convert some Word documents or anything like that, just because of the vector graphics that we use for it. I don't know what vector graphics are. I'll quit adding.
If something better comes back, I mean, I'm open to looking at it. I think it's, you know, I just think $1,750 a year is a little pricey. I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed to people being able to access stuff, but it's, I just think that's a little bit high, so.
I agree. So I, I think we should wait on it, too.
Okay.
See if they come up with something better or...
Technology changes.
And this was just a discussion, so I don't think we need to eagerly vote on it.
Yep.
We'll give you back since this costs...
I appreciate that.
That's your training, man.
I'm liable.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
No.
No, thank you, guys.
And Charlie didn't show up, so...
Thank you for letting us go early. We appreciate that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
You guys aren't here for this Capitol Region physical capacity profile, are you? No? That's just, that's just HR?
That's just you?
Okay.
So we can go with Randy?
Okay, great.
Twenty-fourteen Annual Review of UMR Health Insurance by Wall Street Insurance Group.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your time this morning. There's, first of all, we have very, very good news, so that's a great way to start the morning when you talk about healthcare in today's world. On the right-hand side, there is two packets. We are not gonna go through this page by page, so put your mind at rest, but there's some key things in here I think will be good for the commission to see and hear. And on the left-hand side reverts, or goes back to some of the pricing that we worked through to get to this point, but maybe as a quick reminder, and Sam, you're familiar, I know we've been with you, and of course, obviously, you've been visiting with Debbie where indicated and needed to, but just a brief history, the Cole County was partial self-funded, I'm talking years ago, but for the past probably ten years at least, they were fully insured. So every year, you're getting a price from a fully insured carrier agreeing on that premium. You're paying them all the premium, they take all the risk. The next fall, because we're January 1 renewal, you know, you have a true-up, if you will, as your independent advisor, we would go out to the market, look at the marketplace, which has definitely dwindled now because you basically have Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Healthcare, Coventry, but Coventry was just purchased by Aetna. So there's about three companies out there, and through the years, we've, you know, went to those different companies where they gave us the best pricing. We've talked about partial self-funding. We looked at it in 2013 and made a decision to stay fully insured, and then in 2014, January 1 of 2014, made a decision to go partial self-funded. And I'll come back to the numbers on the left of why that made sense in a minute, but when we did that, so January 1 of 2014, we really started with a clean slate, if you remember, gentlemen, because claims that were incurred during 2013, let's say Randy went in in November and had knee surgery, well, in 2013, we were fully insured. So even if that claim came in in January, February, March of the next year, it was still paid by that previous fully insured carrier because you, that was the risk they took on, what we call the run-out claims. Well, January 1 of 2014, we started with partial self-funding, and we went on a 12-15 reinsurance contract to cover any claims incurred during 2014, and under the reinsurance contract, not only incurred during 2014, but paid during the first three months of the next year, January, February, March, what we call the 12-15 contract. So we wanted to show you the claims for that time period, so we had to get through March to do that. It took the month of April to bring that together and why we're meeting today. So on the right-hand side, there's two stapled copies. The first one is on your medical, and it pulls a little bit of pharmacy in, and the second one, and that's, that has UMR on the bottom left, the one behind that says Optum, which is your RX. So if it's okay with the commission, I'll jump into these reports, and we're gonna hit these kind of high level, but if you flip to page three of the UMR report, I just wanna mention the criteria that was used in this report. So just under date range, as I've indicated, but just the habit to reference, I'm gonna be throwing out a lot of terms today, so we deal with this all the time, and we learn all the time, and I know you all have a million things going besides just this. So the current period is a reminder, it's 2014, claims incurred during the full year, but paid through 3/31/15, as I indicated previously. The prior period, you're not gonna see any data there in this report because we were fully insured, but a year from now, when we look at, you know, 2014 and 2015 data, you'll start to see some site-by-site comparisons, which will be good. So the group data includes all of the members, which includes employees and dependents. Everyone's included, no restrictions, and the pharmacy data is coming from Optum RX. The normative data, we did wanna compare it to the UMR block of business to give you some benchmarking. So the composition of the normative data is the UMR active groups, and that includes almost 1,800 groups covering over a million employees and 2.3 million total members. So you're, as we talk about benchmarking, you look at norms here, it's a pretty vast group that you're being compared to, and it's the same date range that we're comparing that.
So is that just, can you explain that a little further? What, I mean, what are you saying normative group, so?
Their, their block, United's block of business, uh, excuse me, UMR's block of business for their self-funded employers on that same timeframe.
So we're, we're in that group, too?
Yes. Yeah. So you're in that group, and we're just breaking you out of that group, saying here's how you compare it to that normative data.
So it's not, doesn't include, this is all partially self-funded people?
Oh, well, we self-funded.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good with your question. So as you go to page four, again, I'll hit these high level, but this gives you some demographic of enrollment by age, just gives you an idea of where your census stacks up. So when you go down to the bottom, just under the light blue there, again, 2013, information's gonna be zeros, but 2014, the average employee age was 43, average member age, when you take everybody, employees, spouses, children, and divide them all out, is 34. You can see the UMR norm is just, just above those, but you're pretty close. The average employee age is just a little bit less, which is interesting. And right behind that is the enrollment by coverage tier. It just shows how many males and females that you have, including employees and dependents. So when you think about that, we have 281 employees covered, 173 males, 108 females, and then underneath of that, when you take members, that's again, including all spouses, children, you can see how that breaks out. So you're covering 1,413 belly buttons, if you will. So when we talk about the county's health plan and claims and so forth, even though the employees pay for part of their premiums for dependents and those type of things, you're covering a very large, you know, group of, of members. The next page, six, gets into your claims overview, and I'll just walk down through 2014. And again, this is the full calendar year of 2014, including claims that were processed and paid in January, February, March, that were 2014 claims. So it really gives us that full, you know, mature picture, if you will. So there was just over 3 million of billed charges. The ineligible was just under 600,000 ineligible. Give you some examples, that could be a cosmetic surgery. So Randy goes in, I have a claim, it goes through UMR and the United Network, but when it hits UMR or TBA, it's kicked out as ineligible because it was a cosmetic surgery. A lot of this is duplicate charges, so if Randy goes in and they send a bill through UMR, but it has not been paid yet, maybe they were asking for some doctor's notes, and that billing office for that medical provider sends out a bill every 30 days, UMR might get that same bill three times before it's processed and paid. Every time it hits and they, if it's another duplicate bill, it becomes ineligible. So a lot of your 600,000 are duplicate bills that were ineligible against your plan. So that gets you down to the medical-covered amount of 2.5 million. The pricing savings is your medical network discount, which is substantial. We'll talk, we'll come back to a piece on this a little bit, too, but that 1.3 million, I'm just using round numbers here, was savings by the UMR network. So when someone went to, let's say, Capitol Region or SSM, as a local example, and they charged $1,000, but then that's reduced down to 500 because of their, the United discount, that's that network savings. So the medical allowed then was 1.2 million. The benefit design, the negative number there of 267,000, that is what your members paid, so that's Randy, your member, paying my deductible, my copayment for medical for pharmacy. So of these medical allowed charges of 1.2 million, 267,000 of that was covered by your members before the county wrote checks for that out of their claims fund. There was also another 9,000 taken off of that for coordination of benefits, meaning that someone may have had duplicate coverage here. Let's say that there's a child covered here, but they're also covered under another spouse's plan, and we coordinated between those two plans on who would make, be making the appropriate first dollar payment. So that reduced your medical paid from the county's perspective down to 937,000. There's also RX paid, prescription drug cost paid, 287,000. So your total paid on claims was 1,224,000 that the county paid, but I'm gonna, when we come back to these other numbers in a minute, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring back into play the full cost of the 1,213,000, 'cause even though your members paid part of that, I want you to look at what the total spend of your group was compared to fully insured, and that'll, I'm throwing a lot at you there, but that'll make sense when we come back to these numbers here in a minute. So, so let me stop with that, notice a lot of numbers, but any just initial questions? I'll walk you through that. Okay.
That RX paid, are we gonna see that over on Optum?
Yeah.
As 287?
Yeah. So you'll see that there, and I'm gonna hit some pages there, Chris.
That's fine.
And I wasn't gonna go through a ton of stuff there, but we'll hit as much as you want to. So the next page is your claims overview, just the continuum of that, of the payment metrics. So the first column or the first block is your paid per employee per month. This is where you're going to see eventually when we get to the financial summary, where the county has done extremely well moving to partial self-funded. So when you go down to where it says paid, P-E-P-M, paid employee member per month, or paid employee per month, and it goes across and says for 2014, $363.26, that is the average cost of this plan for your employees per month compared to the norm of $785. So you are significantly less than what the norm is. When you go down to per member per month, the very last number there, this includes now all of your members, again, spouses and children, your average cost is 247 compared to 360, 366, so again, 30% below the norm.
So let me stop you there. So the top one is per employee, so that takes that 441 and divides that back into the three, what was it, 281?
Correct.
413, back into 281. Okay.
Correct.
Thanks.
The page behind that, I'm not gonna spend any time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit these pages as we go. I know you all can, I was gonna look at these at your leisure, but this just shows your medical and RX per month, which is the same numbers we talked about, but just shows you every month what you had there. And page nine shows you your claims distribution by patient, just showing the amounts of claims. One thing you'll notice under 2014, when you go down, this is just showing, it'll be important to hit this a little bit, but on the 2014 data, the three columns there shows you the number of patients, it shows you the total paid in range, and paid range as a percentage of total. So when you get to the one cent to $499 category, there was 148 patients that had claims in that range for a total of 33,000, and that represents 2.7% of your total paid claims. Okay? If you jump, as you see, you can see, you know, 500 to 1,000, 1,000 to 5,000, from down. Keep in mind that the county is partial self-funded, meaning that you're paying claims after the members paid their deductibles or co-insurance, as that claim comes in on your, your check register, you're paying claims up to the first 50,000. Anything above that, that's a, that's a covered eligible claim, is covered by stop laws. So when you jump down to the 50,000, you had four claimants between 50 and 75,000, one claimant between 75 and 100, and one between 100 and 200, which you're always gonna have some high claimants. That's why we purchase stop laws, but that is actually very, very good on an employer your size, covering that many members, to not have a lot of claims well above the 100,000 range. And... And knock on wood, that's great, we probably will not see that every year, you're going to have some of those quarter million dollar, half a million dollar claims, but that's why we have that reinsurance coverage. So again, the county's simply paying up to the first fifty, and your reinsurance kicks in.
Is that per, like, so one time, I go one time, and that, that's the cost?
Uh, for that member.
Right.
So fifty thousand follows the member. So Randy has a hundred thousand dollar claim during the policy period, you know, that twelve fifteen policy period.
Mm-hmm.
The county pays the first fifty, the reinsurance pays the next fifty. One of my children has a claim for a hundred and fifty thousand, you're going to pay fifty thousand on that. So your, your risk is fifty thousand per member, those four hundred and thirteen members, but then we also have an aggregate umbrella that you don't have to buy, but we are, where if you hit a certain dollar amount, you're done for every, everybody for the whole year. It kind of gives you a top end, if you will, because if you took fifty thousand times four hundred and thirteen people, obviously, it's a humongous liability. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I'm not sure. So let's, let's jump down here to this one at seventy-seven thousand. Is, is that, that one member, is that their total aggregate for the whole year?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, that is their total aggregate claims for this range, that two thousand and fourteen. So the county would have paid fifty, and the reinsurance carrier would have stepped in, paid twenty-seven.
Okay. And so then, then back up to the fifty to seventy-five, where you got four, so we had four people that totaled, that their total was two seventeen, but it, each of them was over fifty thousand?
Right. So we, we can get you those exact ones.
No, that's fine, I just, yeah.
But at your point, it, it could be, you know, four people with fifty-five thousand, or it could be someone with, you know, seventy-three thousand and someone with fifty-one thousand.
Right.
Those four together total two seventeen.
Okay.
So, you know, again, you're running very, very well. To that point, kind of gets in, I guess, to help answer some of those questions, we de-identified this from, from personal health information, but this is a high-cost claimant report, this shows a summary of your top ten claimants. It simply shows you, we took all the relationship, male or female, age off of this, so it's de-identified, but it does show you, shows, show you whether they're active or terminated, and it shows the current total paid, the current medical amount, current, current pharmacy amount that relates to those totals. So just, and you can see there, there was a few, to your point, Chris, if you look just below number two, there, the next four are those fifty thousand claims.
Okay.
So you had four people, and you were from fifty-five to fifty-two thousand. So they just barely went over that fifty thousand limit. But two of those, you'll notice five and six are term, so they're off the plan. And, you know, a high claimant today, I'm just going to use number one here as an example, we don't have that personal information here, but that's something we can drill down to for the appropriate person within the county, Debbie, if you needed to have that information. But just because you have a high claimant, number one here, doesn't mean they're going to be your high claimant next year, obviously. They could be, they could be a term, they could be an ongoing chronic condition, but this could have been a car accident situation, they're back to work and doing good. So that's why you have stop loss protections, is to cover those, those high claims. Any questions on that? Page eleven, just, again, I'm going to skip these a little bit faster, but this just shows you cost by category, both in, in printed format and a pie chart, is where your dollars are going, from RX to outpatient, so forth and so on. When you look at that pie chart, you'll, you'll notice the RX is a pretty good piece. I'm going to talk to you about some things when we get to RX in a minute, but that, when you look at this five years from now, just in general, not Cole County specifically, RX will become a bigger and bigger and bigger piece of this pie chart. And that's the scary thing about where we're head, we're heading with medical care in this country, is the cost of those prescription drugs, especially specialty medications. So a year, two, three years from now, that pie chart's going to look a little different. This goes into a little more detail, page twelve, about key indications of ER visits, office visits, labs, and so forth. Again, I need to probably spend a lot of time there, but just kind of shows where your dollars are going. Page thirteen is top ten service categories by total paid. It's usual that you would see inpatient towards the top, but then you get into a lot of outpatient surgery facilities, surgery physicians. Shows you where your dollars are going.
Could, could we go back, page twelve?
Okay.
I know we, we touched on this last year, looking at ER visits and trying to increase those costs, and so just that top one, ER visits per thousand, I'm not, I'm just don't, I'm not understand, sure I understand what that means?
Per, per, what they're talking about is per thousand members, which y'all don't have a thousand, but they use that as their block. Your average cost is, is two hundred and twenty, forty-eight, the norm is two fifteen, so we're a little bit higher than norm, and we had talked with Debbie about this, as we get into your plan design this year, not, not only around ACA compliance and so forth, but ER is probably the area to look at, and there's obviously reasons people do go to ER, it's needed, it's an emergency, but we can actually drill down with UMR and look at what people went in for, and if we're struggling against some, you know, people going in that really was not emergency, maybe we need to increase the copayment amount that you pay there as an example.
And we're getting more urgent cares.
Right.
All, all the time.
Right.
So.
And urgent care, to that point, Sam, is a lot less than emergency care.
Yeah, yeah.
So it might be continual education to members, maybe, maybe making the emergency room cost a little bit more, so it's disincentive, but if someone needs to go to emergency room, they need to go. But, but we'll drill down and actually give an overview of exactly whatever emergency room visit was.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at that prescription, too. I know we, I mean, I, I really wasn't aware of that when we did that last year, that we had the ability to, to tweak every little category, and so, you know, as you said, prescriptions are going to be a bigger part. Well, I think that the members should pay a bigger portion, too, so.
Sure.
Anyway.
You bet.
We did change it a little bit.
Right.
You'll see that on here, but that's a very good, you're getting the nail on the head, Chris.
Right.
That pharmacy will continue to be one of the biggest things we've got to look at, and what, and it's, it's fair balance, I mean, what, what's still a great benefit to attract and retain your top talent, employees, but what's a fair amount they pay?
Sure.
Versus what the county pays, so. But now, very good, very good point. Page fourteen, again, inpatient summary, you know, your inpatient really is, we've been fortunate, and I think it goes back to the high claimants, we haven't had major inpatient stays of someone being in ICU for twenty-seven days and a half a million dollar claim. You can see your norm is, is less than the, or your, your cost is less than the norm, which is good. And some of that, you know, you can't control, things happen, and that's why we have, why you have insurance, obviously. Page fifteen, this is a great example of where the county's doing well. On network utilization, if you go down to the bottom right corner, of all of your claims for medical, ninety-nine point four percent of those claims stayed in the, in the network, which is huge. And you, I don't know that we've ever seen one that high, because you, you'll never get to a hundred percent generally, because if you have an ambulance-type visit, they don't belong to any network. So you throw in a couple ambulance visits, and you're never going to be at a hundred percent, but to be at ninety-nine point four percent, that means all of your members are obviously staying in the network, which gives them a discounted cost for care, but it obviously saves you money when you're paying that claim after they pay their portion. So it's very, very good. The network utilization continued, this shows the discount that you receive, and this goes back to the, the numbers that we looked at before, the two point five million reduced down to one point two million, that was a fifty-two point three percent savings. So with United's network, and as your independent advisor, as we look at different options available and out there in the marketplace, you've got United's network, you have Anthem's network, you have Anthem's rentable network, which is HealthLink, so they're all good networks, but if we ever looked at moving, that's a big question, is what are their potential savings within that network? Because if we would move to another health plan, even if it gave us a few fixed costs, maybe on what they're charging for their TPA services and that type of thing, but we only averaged a forty-five percent discount, this is where your big dollars are, this is where your claims are. So to get a fifty-plus percent discount is, is excellent. And that comes from, again, we were with United, and maybe Sam has reminded, we were with United, fully insured, and then went to UMR, which is United Healthcare's TPA, third-party administrator. So for the employees, it was nice, because we really stayed with the same network, which is funded, self-funded rather than fully insured, but you're still getting those United discounts, which, again, you look at the market, you've got United and Blues, there's the big players out there. Any questions on that?
Are you going to get to the, the total cost? I mean, okay.
Yeah. So really, the next pages, that's everything I really wanted to hit on. Page eighteen just shows you different things by major diagnosis. The last page is important, because I think it relates back to some things that y'all are working on with maybe the health department, which is preventative screenings. So the very last page in here just shows you, under two thousand and fourteen, it shows you, as an example, there were seventy-one eligible members that, based on their age demographics, were eligible for mammography, for mammogram. Thirty-five had that, so roughly fifty percent of the group, which is just a little bit higher than the norm. But then you can look at, right below there, cervical cancer screening, ESA screening, colon, colon cancer screening is an example, you know, we had a hundred and three eligible, twenty-six did that, which is still higher than the norm. And then cholesterol, again, you can look at those numbers. So all in all, you're higher than the norm, but going back to United before we went partial self-funded, they had these simply engaged programs we had built into your health plan, and it allowed them to come on site and do biometrics for the employees, and the, you know, county supported that and so forth. So when we moved to partial self-funding, that's still, that's not available. If you would want to engage in something with an outside vendor, like a UMR, you're going to pay something for them to come in and do those biometrics and take the blood screening and so forth, or obviously, you've got your own health department, which is, you know, a great opportunity for the county. I think Debbie, you are looking at some of those things now.
They're looking at the wellness programs, so.
So, good. So your, you know, your, your members have went, in two thousand and fourteen, the county did not sponsor a come in and have your blood, and so we're done through the biometric testing as part of this program.
Now, we forgot to tell Ralph Ray, we volunteered him to be our, for this building, he's the guy that's over the wellness, because he was on vacation, so.
Yeah.
You see Ralph, tell him, he's it.
When'd we do that?
When he was on vacation.
But when'd we do that?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Christie did.
Christie did it?
Oh, very good. On the pharmacy, we're going to move this a little bit quicker, too, I don't feel like I'm rushing, but there's a lot of info in here. On page two, these are just some trend things, I've hit on this a little bit, but just high level, when you look under the red column highlighted there, specialty medications. Specialty medications, as a reminder, are the latest biotech-type drugs, usually injectables, that have been hitting the market for several years now, but this is where all of the research of Big Pharma is at, is specialty biotech drugs. As an example, that's Randy, who's taken an oral form of rheumatoid arthritis medicine today, maybe it's three hundred dollars a month, I'm paying my portion, the county pays theirs. I go visit with my physician, and they say, Randy, you know, we've been looking at and visiting with, with pharmacy companies about a latest self-injectable for rheumatoid arthritis, we think it would work wonders for you. So from a humanitarian perspective, I'm all ears, this sounds great, you know, I can take this injectable, but that injectable might be three, four, five thousand dollars a month. So these, these specialty medications are very expensive for things like rheumatoid arthritis, MS, a lot of cancer drugs are hitting the market now. So that's where we're headed in this country, is higher, higher, higher costing medications. Again, from a humanitarian side, that's wonderful, from a cost side, somebody's got to pay for it. The bullet point under, so specialty pharmacy growth is the single greatest contributing cog factor trend. Today, specialty spend accounts for about one-third of all RX spend, projected to increase to fifty percent in three years. So that, when I mentioned that pie chart, that's what you're going to see differently. Direct-to-consumer ads, as you all know, when you watch the evening news and television, I mean, the pharmacy industry spends enormous amount on ads, it's direct-to-consumer advertising. It's Randy going into my doctor and saying, hey, what about the purple pill, or I saw this ad about injectables. So your members are getting educated beyond just their physicians about, if you haven't tried this for your ailment, you know, try this. So the other thing, just skipping to the lower range on drug price inflation, manufacturers have sustained double-digit annual price increases for both brand and specialty categories over the last three years. So we're looking at generally twenty percent increases for those same medications year to year. So just give you an insight to where things are headed. Any questions on that? The page three, this goes back to, Chris, as you mentioned there, when you look at the copayments, these are the current copayment structures of the traditional PPO plan, the high deductible health savings account, single plan, the family plan, which are the same copayment plans, just different out-of-pockets, but that gives you an idea of where we are today, and with what we're charging for copayments, that will be something we need to continue to look at when we come back late summer, early fall, we'll drill down a little bit more with you all on prescriptions, that's why I want to take a lot of time today, say, here's what's working good, here's where you're out of the norm, what do y'all think about raising copayments? And obviously, if you raise copayments, your members pay more, but again, it's that balance, so we'll give you some advice on that. We did, and on plan programs, on the top right, under the, where it says, plan programs there, specialty programs, we did change that in one one and fifteen, and we changed specialty copays were changed to twenty-five percent with a two hundred dollar max for all plans. So we already have moved that, you know, dial, if you will, if you will, a little bit to where members who choose specialty medications are paying a little bit more, that'll be something we'll continue to look at.
Are prescriptions taxed? Is your sales tax on prescriptions?
Um, I would assume, Chris, that's a great question, I'm going to have to check.
I was just curious, because I know, you know, sometimes when you buy through the mail, you can get a three-month subscription, is that correct, or?
Yes. Yeah, that's a good question.
And so I just didn't know if, if people.
No, they're not.
They're not?
Thank you.
So.
The legislature's disgusted, but they're not.
So when, when people buy through the mail, I mean, and I see their copays usually are typically a little less for buying three months, who's picking up the difference?
Well, you're, you're getting, you're getting, that whole drug is a reduced cost.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's the benefit of using mail order, they're cutting out the retail bricks and mortar facility, if you will.
Right.
And so that drug is less for the plan, for the member, and that's why you encourage them through lower copayments to do that. And it's very convenient for the member, I mean, once they, you know, start having that delivered, they're not standing in line at the pharmacy, but you're not forcing them, someone that has that relationship with their pharmacist has questions, go in, they're going to pay a little more.
Why are you able to fill a prescription for three months through the mail, but only one month at a pharmacy?
They're just, right now, because of that discount, if you had a pharmacy in town here, you'd have to go through Optum, that would agree to a discounted rate where the member could fill it locally and still get that discount. You, you are seeing some of that movement in the industry, because for a retail pharmacy, obviously, mail order's competing against them, but historically, it's been going to the mail order house to get the wholesale pricing versus retail. But it doesn't prevent a retail pharmacy from a green to lower cost. If they would do that, Optum would set it up, it could possibly be done.
Yeah.
And I could get you enough doing that.
Well, I just, I mean, we'd like to see people shop locally and support local businesses, but at the same time, you know, if there's a big benefit for them to shop through the mail, I mean, it's hard to, hard to tell them not to do it.
Right.
I will say, sometimes medications that need to be kept at a particular temperatures, like top of the medications, and it's ninety-eight degrees in the summer, and they put this in your mailbox.
Right.
And you get home at five-thirty, I mean, there's that issue, too.
Right. So right today, you're, you're giving them an option, you're not.
Sure.
Making that, we, we have some plans that are mail order only, it's pretty aggressive, but, but we're, we're making, we're taking steps.
Okay.
But that'll be, again, something to look at. The next page is really the main one that I wanted to hit on in wrapping up, is, this is obviously Cole County Commission two thousand and fourteen compared to the block of business, and when you look at generic utilization, you know, out of a hundred percent drugs being filled, eighty-six percent of those are being filled generically, which is well above the norm, which is great. And again, that's driven by copay differentials, so you're encouraging members, you're never, again, going to be at a hundred percent, because not every drug has a generic equivalent, especially, these are new specialties and so forth. The plan paid, what the plan is paying per member per month is fifty-seven dollars, so when you look at how much you're spending on pharmacies, fifty-seven dollars and forty-six cents, under the book of business, which is great, so your members are purchasing prescriptions, but the overall cost of those is less than your book of business comparison. So your members are purchasing prescriptions, but the overall cost of those is less than your book of business comparison. The average client pay is sixty-four dollars and eighteen cents. That's what the county is paying on your average for the prescriptions after your member pays their copayment. Your member is paying eighteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. That's a little bit higher than the norm, but as they reference, it's typical for groups with high deductible health plans, because on your high deductible health plan, they're paying for the full prescription until they meet the deductible. The member cost share, your members are paying twenty-two point seven percent of the total cost of prescriptions, which is well over the sixteen point one, and really falls in line to the recommendation between twenty and twenty-five percent. So it's not like we're at twelve percent, we've gotta make major, major changes to get your members paying more. The claims per member per month is point nine, so just under one prescription per month, which is good. A little bit higher than the norm, but we have, depending on different industries, school districts, hospitals, to name a couple, generally have well over one, I mean, they might be averaging one point three, one point four prescriptions per member per month. So put that in perspective, if, if Randy's taking two prescriptions a month, Debbie's taking none, and you average that out, it's gonna be one prescription per member per month. So of all your four-hundred-and-something members, you're averaging just under one prescription per member per month. A lot of those don't take any, some of them might be taking three, four, five, or six, so when you average it out, just under one, which is good. Mail order, sixteen percent, which is higher than the norm. And specialty is twenty percent compared to twenty-three percent. So we're under, we're under the market a little bit there, but that's, it's, it's gonna be hard to hold that. It's gonna be a bigger and bigger piece that we talked about. To put that in perspective, on the very bottom, specialty medications, the average cost for specialty medications per month is almost twenty-eight hundred dollars. The average brand is two-hundred-and-twenty-three, engineered for thirty dollars. So it gives you the idea of the savings of someone taking generic or a brand or obviously specialty. There's a humongous cost variation when you move to specialty medications. Any questions on any of that? And the page behind that, Chris, I won't necessarily get into it, but it just shows you right in the middle, when you drop down, just your total plan spend, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand for pharmacy. So brings the number back in. Behind this is a lot of detail, it gets into top prescriptions, a little bit of demographic things, but for the sake of time, unless the commission wants to hit on any of that, I'll let you review that at your leisure, unless Debbie, you had anything else on that?
Do you know how much of the two-hundred-and-eighty-five was specialty drug?
Yeah, it was, it was twenty percent of it, so about fifty thousand, rough, rough numbers. And those are your highest costing medications. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, to jump to the numbers, and I'll wrap up, get out of your way here. On the left-hand side, to kind of bring all this back in perspective, thought it'd be helpful just to back up. So the first page here that has the green print on the left-hand side, this was what led to the decision one-one of two thousand and fourteen, which was made in the fall of thirteen to go partial self-funded for the year of two thousand and fourteen. So at that point, we had a rate increase of twenty-nine percent, had shopped the market, nothing else provided any relief from that. So looking at the first column here, we were going to go from a annual budgeted spend of one million eight hundred thousand, call it one, one million nine hundred thousand. Again, fully insured, where you give them all the money, they take all the risk, make sure you have a renewal. It was gonna go from that to two point four million, two million four hundred twenty-five thousand. So in looking at partial self-funding, what we related here, and it'll make a little more sense when we look at the next page, we basically showed very similar plan designs and went out and looked at partial self-funding. So behind these numbers, there's some self-funding nuances. But we knew that the max out-of-pocket with this umbrella coverage was two million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So it was a fairly, not easy decision, but I mean, to move to partial self-funding, we were not taking any more top-end risk. We had the benefit of, we had good claims a year to save money. So we basically were just under two point four million, two million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. When you go across to the, just the printed numbers we've put in here, we brought these over from what would have been some additional fixed cost things we had shown you and other things leading up to that. The total fixed cost is five hundred and seventeen thousand during two thousand and fourteen. That's what you paid UMR for their TPA services, for the network and all those things.
And the reinsurance.
And the reinsurance, which is a very good point, the biggest piece of that is your reinsurance cost. So five hundred and seventeen thousand is your fixed cost. You had the two eighty-seven RX claims, one million two hundred and thirteen in medical claims. Now this does not take into account what your members paid and all that.
Right.
That is just, what do we spend? So you had one million five hundred thousand in medical and RX claims, plus your fixed cost was, let's call it, two million dollars. So rough numbers, the county saved four hundred thousand dollars. If you would have stayed fully insured, you would have given United two hundred, two point four million, we ended up spending two million. So four hundred thousand is setting roughly in your claims account, I think that mirrors, Debbie, where you're at. I have to say that we do a lot of work with large groups, partial self-funding, but you all are probably one of the best success stories of moving through that.
Don't jinx us.
Yeah. So the, the page, the next page, I just wanted to remind you and share this again. So this was then the renewal last fall of two thousand and fourteen, going into the renewal starting one-one of fifteen. So this just showed the current numbers, and when you go towards the middle, well, just to walk down through that, on the current, it says the carrier, the reinsurance carrier is BP, which is United Healthcare, is the reinsurance carrier. It's on a twelve-fifteen contract, so we talked about how long you're covered and the runout. It's a fifty thousand dollar specific deductible, so again, you pay up to the first fifty, it covers medical and pharmacy under that specific deductible. Your third-party administration fee is thirty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents, that's what you pay UMR for their, their TPA work and the network of, of United. There's no network access fee, because it's built into that. You pay Wall Street five dollars and ninety-five cents per employee per month, we charge a flat fee. So we don't, it's not, it's not a percentage of commission tied to your premium. The aggregate premium, the five-twenty-three is the umbrella coverage. I'll talk, that'll make sense as we get to the bottom here. Again, it covers medical RX. The other big part of your fixed cost is what you're paying for the specific reinsurance. So you're paying eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents per employee per month to have that fifty thousand dollar insurance policy. Over time, if we raised that deductible, you know, it would lower that premium, and we may do that over time, but we didn't need to last year, because we had such a good renewal. But that's no different than buying a insurance on your automobile and saying, what's the cost of a five hundred dollar deductible compared to a thousand dollar deductible? This is what you're paying in premium for that insurance policy. So that combined, again, is your fixed cost of five hundred and seventeen thousand that we had on the previous page. The aggregate, you don't have to purchase this coverage, but you're wisely doing it at this point. This gives you that ceiling protection that says, look, if we have four hundred and something members that all had a claim, which is extremely unlikely, and we had to pay the first fifty thousand of all those members, you're talking millions of dollars. So how do we cap that? Well, you buy aggregate coverage, which underwriting, you come up with aggregate factors and so forth, which comes up with an attachment point, which is the one million eight hundred thousand. You add that to your five hundred fixed cost, gets you to that two million three hundred and thirty-four thousand we looked at before. So keep in mind, the beauty of self-funding, though, is the fixed cost, we know we're paying, that's going in every month. All the rest of these dollars that you were giving to United upfront for them to pay claims as they came in, now you're retaining in your own bank account and paying them when the claims incurred, processed with a discount, the fifty percent discount, and presented for payment to Debbie after your members paid their deductible and co-insurance. So you gained all that cash flow, plus again, how commonly we've had a great year to where you didn't spend all that money. And then when you look at the renewal, just jumping to the bottom, we just had virtually a zero percent increase. We had a little bit of an increase on fixed cost, but you ran so well that first year, we had a great renewal running into this year. So virtually, your costs are flat in two thousand and fifteen from a fixed cost, a little bit of increase there, but from a liability standpoint, basically flat. You're still running well this year, and we'll see what plays out towards the end of the year. Over time, we'll be looking at this scenario, please stay partial self-funded. You can always raise your deductible, again, from fifty to sixty to seventy, and lower that premium, but you're taking on more risk for those claims. But you'll, you'll get a better comfort for that, we will, on your behalf, as we mature, you know, year two, year three, year four, we will. Lot of numbers, any questions?
So, yeah, I got a question. So when we looked at the renewal at two point four million to do the same insurance that we did, what was that, January of fourteen? Right. And then, so you're, you're saying the medicate, medical claim cost was one point two one-three?
Right.
But the employees paid two hundred and sixty-seven thousand of that.
Correct.
So.
So you're.
Wouldn't, wouldn't they have paid their portion on top of that two point four million?
In, in premium. So, and they're still paying premium here today too, so the, the county, I mean.
No, but, I mean, so wouldn't that, two sixty-seven, wouldn't that have been copays that they would have paid on top of, if we would have renewed at two point four million, they would have paid that on top of that?
They would have paid, they would have paid for part of their care, and I think I understand what you're saying, but because you would have given all the money to United, it's two point four million to buy this policy.
Right.
The county has now left the financial side of this equation, and now the employees are paying, when they go in for care, their copayments and so forth. But it's not the county that's cost sharing with them, it's United Healthcare's fully insured. And at the end of that year, United comes back and say, hey, this was a great year for us, or a bad year, and you get an increase. But you all have paid your portion of premium, and the employees were paying their dependent premiums too, just like they are today. But, but the difference today is, the county now has became that United Healthcare. You're, you're funding claims and sharing in that compared to just being out of the equation after you pay your premium. But your employees, Chris, were paying costs here as they were here today. And I've included what they paid in this total. Just to relate that back to what your total spend was for the county. But when you look at what, on behalf of what you all paid out, employer and employee, but to your point, the employees paid cost here, which was, which was shown in this first page, you know, you're, you're, when you look back, I'm gonna pull it back up. Page six, you've got that one million two hundred and thirteen thousand.
Right.
That we brought over here, just from a total perspective. But to your point, two hundred and sixty-seven of that was paid out by your members, by your employees.
But I guess, I'll try to rephrase my question. If we would have renewed at that two point four million and paid it all to UMR, the employees would have still picked up a, a something on top of that, on, as far as a total spend.
You could, you could add their, you're right, you could add their cost to that. If we knew exactly what that was, let's say it was even numbers, they spent two, two million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, you could say, hey, our plan this year cost all of us this in premium. Plus the employees ended up paying another two hundred and fifty thousand in their cost on top of that plan.
Right. So I mean, really, that's an additional savings.
You, yeah, yeah, I see what you're going, yeah.
Yeah. Because I mean, if I would have been on the, the previous plan and a high deductible, I still would have paid all that out-of-pocket.
That's correct.
Even with that better insurance, so. So potentially, we save six hundred thousand dollars instead of four hundred.
Right, very, very good point, yeah. So this, I was just trying to show from the county's perspective, at your point, your employees had cost and the fully insured one too. So whatever they spent there.
Right, we don't know what that number is.
No, and we can dig some of that up, but it's, yeah, they're, they're, you know, it's not a hundred percent health plan, so they're paying, to your point, if they're paying a three thousand dollar deductible or a fifty dollar copayment, there's more being spent there. But all in all, you all are doing exceptionally well. Again, we'll hopefully keep that, keep that running. You know, again, as your independent advisor, we're not married to United and UMR, especially as you get some more track record, two, three years in self-funding. You know, if they come in and really hit us with an increase, we can go to the market and look at other TPAs and other networks. But again, that network is a real question, because, but it gives us leverage on your behalf. So I mean, it's not like we're with them, and that's the only game in town, but they're, they're a very, very good player. And it was an easy transition, because you're already with United, kept the network the same, so. Any other questions on the reporting? Just real quick on healthcare reform, basically, we met with Debbie and talked with Debbie about this. On the employer shared responsibility rules that were supposed to go into play one-one of fourteen, they were pushed back to one-one of fifteen. So one-one of fifteen is when the reporting cycle starts, that you have to capture certain information, that's what this first page tells you. As you flip to the inside, there's certain reporting, so on the bottom left, where it says combined reporting, the sixty, sixty-five-six report. That reporting, and it leads into the next page, and actually tells you on these bullet points what's in that report, which is the name of each individual enrolled in your MECC plan, which is your minimum essential coverage or your group health plan. So all the employees enrolled in your plan, last name, last known address, tax identification number, number of months covered for them and their dependents. All of that has to be turned into the government on the second to last highlighted column on the right here, paragraph. Reporting entities must file the section sixty-five-five, return to the IRS by February twenty-eighth or March thirty-first, if filed electronically. You all probably did it electronically. So by the end of the first quarter of two thousand and sixteen, this report has to go to the government, the roll-up report. But right underneath of that, each individual person has to be given the, the information that was given to the government about them. So if Randy's on that report, you've gotta give me the information that says, Randy, we reported to the government, your name, your social, and you were enrolled in the plan for the full year, or you were hired in March and you came on in April. That needs to go to them by January thirty-first, so most employers are gonna send that out with the W twos. But that's another, you know, ACA requirement that's been levied on business. Your HR team, payroll team's gonna have to bring that together to turn it. So we'll help with that, we're still, we'll, we'll help Debbie with that, to understand that your team here, the reports are just now getting finalized, where we can sit down and review them. And you're gonna pull some information from UMR, some is gonna come from your payroll, together to complete that, as we understand it.
And the part that's coming from our payroll, of course, we're changing HR assistants in the middle of the year, so we're working with the new vendors here. And they hope to have all the reporting for all of them.
You can't ever retire, Debbie.
Every, every payroll company's hit with this, I mean, they're, it's on, they're high priority to help employees with that, but. Any other questions?
So as we have to start submitting all this stuff to the IRS, and of course, I have no confidence in the IRS at all. And then we're sending out more social security numbers with people's stuff, who's responsible for all that? Them?
I doubt they'll take any responsibility.
And as big as we are, we have to file electronically, so.
So can we black out the numbers?
Well, they request them, so we have to send them.
The IRS already answers our social security.
Well, I realize that, but now we're sending out information, we're giving information through the internet or whatever, that's unsecured, basically, and and now we're giving all four hundred and ten people or whatever that.
And it's gonna be a lot of data collection on our side as far as dependence scope, because we don't house that information in our payroll system now. The new payroll system, I understand, does house that information, which should be easier, but we're gonna have to project it together for this first year of reporting.
Sorry.
We could come up with some privacy policies and, and information protection, and that kind of thing needs to be severely limited. And I don't know what to do, computer is going to have, or who's going to have access to that, but a lot of that, I don't think.
So, just to ask you, I mean, so as, as a claim comes in for me, say, I mean, do you have to attach that to my, somehow attach that to the payroll record or something, so that you can add all that up at the end of the year? I mean, how, how are you gonna do that?
No, what they're requesting is premiums paid by each employee, by the employer, how long you had it, you know, and the hours, you know, the twenty-nine hour threshold.
Mm-hmm.
For part-time and full-time, we're a free report boat. And the biggest thing, it's gonna be challenging, is those people that start in June, their year is from June to the next June. This first year won't be so bad, because it's reporting for all of this year, but after that, you know, then the, the years roll, for everybody is different.
Good grief.
For anyone who is considered part-time, who's not on your plan, who has to get into that year or measurement period.
Yes.
That measurement period will track their date of hire.
Yes.
So it'll, you'll, yeah.
So, so how do you know what we paid per employee, since we're partially self-funded? Because that number could ever change based on how much we actually paid out.
Yeah, we, we use a, almost like a COBRA equivalent rate is what you use for your W twos. So we come up with a, it's kinda like that one, the aggregate number. The aggregate number you come up with that, which.
So, based on the two point four million, we just use that number?
You come up with that.
We have the savings and we didn't spend it, so we just, we just get that benefit.
Yeah, so you're still, you're still using, when you're partial self-funded, you still use basically Cobra equivalent. If Randy was employed here and left employment, you said, here's what he has paid us down our plan, which is what you do today. That's what you're using for the employees' W twos, which you're already reporting on W twos today. Which eventually, two thousand eighteen, if nothing's repealed, that gets to the Cadillac tax, where potentially there's taxation on those benefits if they're over a certain threshold. And they may not, they may not affect county employees, but there's gonna be employees across the nation that will be affected. There's a forty percent excise tax that's imposed on anything above that amount, taxed back to the business, not the employee, and so.
But I'm sure the federal government will opt out of exempt themselves.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
Thirty hours on the employees, I mean, where are we at on the, how does that run? Does that run for the month? Does it run for a week?
You can use up to a twelve-month measurement period, so that's what we're suggesting, it just gives you longer time. So, Randy's employed by the county on a part-time basis, that's what I was hired for, for that position. Maybe I work a lot of hours in the summer, some overtime, that type of thing, but what you can do is spread that over a year. So, over that one-year period, did Randy average more than thirty hours per week? If I did, you either, one, have to offer me coverage, for what's called a stability period, but you either offer me coverage to avoid potentially paying a penalty, or if you chose not to, the risk you run is if I went out on the exchange, had coverage on the individual exchange and getting a tax subsidy, you would owe a three thousand dollar penalty. Which, nobody likes the word penalty, but that three thousand dollars is less than what most businesses are paying for their employees' healthcare plan anyway. So, there'll be some businesses that just let that happen, but what you have to do, though, is monitor it and report it so the government can impose those penalties when they're appropriate. But you can only imagine, it goes back to your point, Chris, with the federal government, you know, all these reports are due across the United States by all employers that are a hundred or more employees during the first quarter of next year, I mean, that is how many thousands and thousands and thousands, I mean, how they're gonna work through that and ultimately compare it to who's on exchanges, who's getting tax subsidies. What I would foresee happening is, businesses are gonna get a audit letter three years from now that says, you know, and looking back at this information from, you know, putting all this information together, we see that you had Randy employed during this timeframe, but he, we also see you on a tax subsidy, can you answer these questions? You know, was, was he offered coverage? Did he work over thirty hours? Was he offered coverage? That's where you're gonna have to start tracking these hard signatures, which we've talked to Debbie about. We need to have employees every year on the open enrollment actively take the medical plan or not, so that you all have proof they were offered coverage, so, we've talked about that.
Well, the reason I ask about the IRS and all these social security numbers is because, talking to accountants, twenty-five percent of the taxes they're filing right now have identity theft.
Right.
And so, you know, huge problem, you know, with, with the IRS right now, and so there's no way that they're gonna be able to process all the taxes from this year, much less take on more paperwork, so, anyway.
I agree.
Thanks, Randy.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We'll follow up, you know, as we get into summer, first, early, early fall, and the next meeting on our claims and working towards the renewal periods. Thank you all.
Thanks, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Tell Joe we missed her.
Break after that, I know.
We don't have a whole lot left, do we?
Nope, I'm gonna recuse myself for cap region and then accounts payable. And you can find, when we were having a long-range plan and you were trying to get somebody to head up the wellness thing for this building, you can find it. What, you, you're in charge?
No.
No, you're, I'm, I'm.
I just asked when we did that, I didn't.
You find somebody, because Christie wants somebody for our building.
If I did, I'm okay with that, I just didn't remember doing it.
Yeah, when we were, he wasn't here, so that's why we voted him to do it. So, you find somebody.
During our long-range planning meeting?
Yes. I'm sorry.
I'm not going.
No, it's, I can't, it's cap region, it, during prom, I can't, no, during prom, I can't, I can't. I know, no, no, this is, this is something that, that, it's, that we were invited. We're not, we're not hosting it, we're not. Yeah. No.
I could check around to see if there's anything.
You know, what I'm trying to get at is.
If there's anything out there, who knows?
No.
weighing in on your decisions for something at a later date.
Yeah.
Kind of like we talked about when those guys came that one day.
Yeah, 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 no.
Hey, Larry, were you gonna send me my secret email, or did you just want me to forward that stuff to you?
Oh, I was gonna send you that, boy. I'll send it to you.
It doesn't matter, I can send it to you too, if you can order mine.
No, but I, if you would send me coffee, though, I would do that.
I don't know where the twenty-five percent came from, but I've heard that too, that's bull crap.
What's that?
About the people stealing people's numbers and filing taxes. I don't know anybody's had theirs stolen, so for it to be twenty-five percent, that's crazy.
Yeah.
They just say that crap to scare everybody, and, which, I mean, you gotta be careful with it, but there's not. Has yours been stolen? Yours? Yours? Yours?
Christie's mom was, and several people up in the very bar was, they picked it back to Anthony McCross, was the company.
Oh, yeah.
I had one on my credit card stolen, the number stolen.
Well, I think, I think people are just filing returns and, you know, if they get one to stick, that somebody that was getting a return, they could just do an easy, easy file.
You have to mail a check in.
Okay, let's keep going. Approval and sign of cap region medical center, physical capacity profile contract, and I'm gonna go sit down here and accuse myself because I am on the board of cap region.
Well, I'll just kinda explain, we started this program in two thousand and nine.
Do we need to keep going?
Do I?
Do we need to keep it going?
Yes, I got, the sheriff would like.
I don't have any questions about it. Do you have any questions, Chris? Did you look it over? I was just trying to save a minute.
Yeah, this is just a, making sure that they're able to work stuff for maintenance and whatnot, they can pick stuff up and do certain things.
It did increase, but I did check with the only other work center in town that does this kind of test, and there are two hundred tests. And for cap areas, you want up to a hundred and forty, of that kind of thing.
I don't know if I see much of the benefit in a whole lot of it. It does find injuries and stuff if it is before. They come here for work comp claims, but it doesn't tell you about any kind of health or anything.
Well, it has stopped some people from coming, so, they didn't pass the test, basically.
You gotta be bad not to take the, or to pass the test, because I went and went through it.
Every job level has a different level of what you have to pass, every job description.
You could be a couch and pass some of them tests.
There's been some that haven't passed, I'm just saying.
They didn't wanna pass. They literally did not wanna pass, they wanted to collect their unemployment. I will bet you.
So, I mean, is this a cost that we incur before we even offer employment? They have to do this before?
They offer employment based on passing.
Okay.
So, they've gone through basically everything, as soon as they pass, then they're ready to come to work the next day.
Have you been out there before? You might call in if you get a chance, just go out there, it's.
Sure, you can take it.
It's not a, it's not a big deal, it's, can you lift a thirty-pound bag five times?
We do have a lot of employees in the sheriff's department that may not pass the drug test or something, but they've already taken this test. So, there is some cost for people that actually don't follow through with employment, so.
Well, they don't, they do the drug test first, if they don't pass, they don't send them to the PCP. So, they're not out that, they, she waits to hear from that.
So, they wait until they get their results?
Yes, because then they got more tests after that, they got a polygraph, and that costs more, even more money, so they wait till they hear back from us.
Well, I was thinking too.
EMS doesn't wait.
Well, I guess I, maybe it's the polygraph I was thinking of, they don't, there's certain, like, this one is before some of the others, so there is a chance that they could, could be possibly paid for this testing if not following through with the program.
That, I don't, I thought they were betting a lot.
So, different departments have multiple tests that people have to pass before they're offered.
Just the sheriff's, just the sheriff's.
EMS doesn't?
They just have the drug test and the PCP test, and of course, all their licensing, but they know that before, there's no test that would cost us money.
Debbie, don't we also use this service too, if someone's injured and we're trying to figure out if they're fit to come back to work?
That's sort of the biggest benefit is, though, is for work comp claims, because if they come in, they do this test, and it says their left arm is weaker than their right arm, and then they file a work comp claim, and they say, well, I'm still hurting, they can go in there, have them do the test, and say, you were only at sixty percent on your left side before, you're at sixty percent, that's all we're on the base, or on the hook for. It doesn't happen very often, but it does give us something to base it on. Go take the test, it's.
And again, we only.
You're breathing, you'll be fine.
We only do this test for the sheriff, building maintenance, public works, EMS, and the bailiffs, because of the type of jobs they do.
So, not everybody does it?
No.
But everybody does, everybody does do a drug test?
We make all of your departments do it, but the elected officials, we offered it to them, but they can decide whether they wanna send their people or not. And the majority of the elected, besides the sheriff, do not send their people for a drug test. And you get into safety-sensitive positions on drug tests, and, and so, you can't mandate everybody to do a drug test.
We can't tell the elected officials what to do.
I thought you sent around a questionnaire that asked us if we would participate.
Yes, I did.
Nothing ever came after that.
Well, you're supposed to, if you wanted it, you were supposed to tell me, and then I would send your people to help branch to us to get tested before you.
Because I thought I responded that I didn't, that I didn't object to it.
If you want your people tested, let me know, we'll set them up, before they come into work.
Yeah, they have drugs, I wanna find out where to get them.
Vincent, V I N C E N T.
I will say.
Please get you a microphone, Larry.
From a liability standpoint, is major league protection for us.
It's probably a good thing we're not using, the microphones are way over there, so.
I mean, I, in general, don't have a problem with it, but I mean, it's just, I'm just trying to think of why we're doing certain tests for certain ones. I mean, so, I mean, I get it, I mean, EMS, they're lifting people, but how is that any different than Chelsea lifting a box full of files?
Well, you've got a liability issue because.
Liability there everywhere.
Well, because what if this person, you don't test them, and it turns out they can't lift that, and they drop a patient, and the lawyer's gonna say, you should have found that out before you even hired this person or sent that person out in the truck. Let me tell you, I'd take that case.
But I think we did test all of our job descriptions, everybody has a level, what level they should test at. At the time, the commission took the stand that we're only gonna test the departments that we think would have more physical needs. I mean, these are at level fours and three, some of them, so, but we don't test for anybody less than level three. And that happens to be these departments. So, I mean, it is a cost, and if you include everybody, that cost is gonna get a lot higher. So. But I did contact the sheriff, I did contact all these people, and they do want the program to continue even at the ten dollars a test more. Is it fine? We're paying one thirty, and I think that says. And again, here's work center, I think they're the only other one in town, and they're up to two hundred dollars. And that was way back the last time I checked, so I'm sure they didn't go down. And I've not gone through that, wanted to know if it's the same type of test versus what cap region does.
So, if they don't pass, we still pay the fee?
Yes.
But if they don't pass, we're getting rid of a potential even worse liability, so.
Well, we've had people to get injured, not work comp, but on their own, and they don't wanna be, say, they're, we have to put them on FMLA or something, and it's that point, they wanna come back to work, but.
Can I have reservations about why they were off, that we'll send them there?
Well, I'm talking about fitness for duty, for instance, over at the sheriff's office, oh, yeah, yeah, I can come back, I could do this, or I can do that, or somebody's saying they can lift at EMS. We can send them there, so that we don't get into this ADA litigation kind of thing.
It just seems like it's a joke to me, I mean, if the test is truly pretty pitiful, from what you say, and I haven't been through it. I mean, a physically fit person could, could pass the test whether they were hurt or not.
You'd be surprised. I mean, I get the breakdown of knees, legs, arms, what percentage they can do, and what health, I mean, it's all on there. And it's three pages long, the report that comes after this.
Okay.
So, it's not just yes or no, they passed, or, I mean, you get a breakdown of issues.
I mean, do they physically strain them to, to their capacity, or, or is it?
A minimal amount is not very high for them to be, I'll just use the ambulance as an example, you know, they gotta carry bodies around and pretty heavy bags with all the equipment in there.
Mm-hmm.
So, they need to be in some kind of a semblance of a shape besides round, and this, the test.
It's too for you to.
I'm serious, go take it once and you'll see, if you don't pass the test, you have to basically not wanna pass the test. Have you been, have you taken it, Debbie?
I did take it that one, when they first started it.
Am I, I'm not exaggerating, it's not a.
I took it, probably like you took it, you know, squeeze this, oh, okay, I'll squeeze it, well, no, they really need you to squeeze it hard to, to get rated, you know? But it doesn't feel like you're doing anything.
To meet the level three, if you have a heartbeat, you're there.
No, I don't, I don't agree, but, because we've had some people, I'm looking, you didn't pass, okay, but you didn't pass, you know, it's not my call.
You looked at them and they looked physically able.
Yes.
And they didn't pass?
Yes.
Why not? They didn't want the job. They can go home and get a check in the mail by not working. They got this job, they interviewed for the job, so they go still sign up for the benefits, and then all of a sudden, we say, hey, you're hired, and they're going, oh, crap. I better, better lose the physical or not pass the physical, so I keep getting my check.
So, you actually have to weight? Do you lift weights, do you lift boxes, or what?
No, it's like I said, they'll have things you squeeze, you'll push things, you'll pull a certain way, and, you know, my left shoulder was dislocated at some point, and so it's just, it's never healed a hundred percent, so it's weaker.
I see.
And also being right-handed, you know.
I never able to imagine that.
Right hand is gonna be, yeah, so, it's, it does have that, and it will document that that way if there's a work comp claim later on, and but to not, to not get a level three is, I don't know. I'll stop while I'm not ahead. I mean, I'm fine with it, I think we need to keep doing it.
Ask for us to hire, or do they have to meet a certain level?
They have to meet a certain level, based on their job description.
Yeah, most of them are level three, right?
Three to four, some of them are four. Most of them are four, actually, that we test for.
Guess there's no running test, huh?
Running test?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember. Did they make you stand in place? I mean, you're not physically running around.
I didn't know if the sheriff deputies had to run, be able to run a mile or something, or.
No, there's nothing like that.
No.
Psychics.
Just for elected officials, metal test.
I don't think we wanna do that. Where are we gonna set our standard?
So, maybe we approve and sign the agreement with cap of the region. All in favor?
Aye.
Sam recused himself.
Should we do a voluntary drug test too, for elected officials?
You can.
I think metal exams.
Just approved, because I know I've been accused of it.
I think metal exams.
Yeah, I think we oughta, yeah, if you don't, if you're not willing to take it, we put a public in and ridicule you.
Let's keep going, let's keep going, okay. Approval of a count's payable. Approval of accounts payable.
I'd ask for approval, I know this is not on the regular agenda, but the health department is
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Sorry, Debbie. Aye.
That's fine.
Trying to save you a breath.
There you go.
Is that it?
I, I have a little unfinished business if we can, I know the last time we talked about the security issue, you guys wanted a bid proposal from Greg on the locks for the buildings. And he sent you guys the proposal from Tyler Key.
Is that the doors?
Yes.
Okay, I had that on my list of questions, I'm trying to find it back.
The deadbolt lock.
That was so we can get in and lock it or whatever if the system goes down.
So we can lock it, yeah.
To lock it, yeah.
The actual doors, and that was the one thousand
Power goes out, everything's unlocked, right?
Yes.
I'm good with it.
He only got it for this building and the annex building. Now, we talked about the security of the other buildings too, once we go to that with the key swipe at the health department. So, again, this proposal is only for this building and the courthouse. So if we want to do the other buildings on top of it, or if we want to wait till that key swipe thing is done and then we look at that then. Cause this alone is a thousand four hundred and six to six dollar.
I was thinking, wait until we have the other key swipe thing done to find out where we need to do it. If we're going to need to do it anyway, just do it and get it out of the way, but that key swipe thing Health, isn't it?
Well, the health doesn't have anything now, so all they have is the key. Juvenile
Oh, health is opposite, never mind.
They don't have a swipe at the door either, so We're not doing them in the security because they have their own
Printer's probably got magnetic stuff, don't they?
But I, the swipe door, get in the door itself, I don't think they have a swipe, I think you have to have a key to get in there. They're open twenty-four seven.
They're, yeah.
So they're never really locked. So I guess maybe juvenile's not a problem. Cause they're open, but
How many times does this happen though, that we need to lock it and the power's out?
How many times? It's probably happened two or three times that I know of, that Donnie's had to stay here
In a year's time or
Any year's time.
In a year's time.
Or two years' time.
The power goes out in the middle of the night and he has to come in or what?
Yeah. That's what he was saying, are the doors actually stay open? Likelihood of anybody knowing that and Just these two buildings for now or
How quickly are we going to come up with the new system?
When that bid was due in.
Does it break down the price per building?
No. It just has per latches, huh?
The other new system's going to be that magnetic strip too.
We can wait till then.
So it'll still be, if it goes down, then it'd still be unlocked? I think just for safety, we probably ought to do it.
Do you want to include the health department and get a bid on that too, or just these two and see?
Yeah, they've got, yeah, they're, they're locks.
Okay, well then, I don't know, why I'm sticking to the other building?
I don't know.
Alright, so
I don't remember it happening that often.
Well, I know Greg said he's had to come over
I've heard Donnie say
And Donnie, yeah.
Donnie and Greg had to hang out there.
Yeah, I don't know what, what the deal was, but
Cause the building wouldn't lock.
And it was hard to get a hold of Sonatrol, I'm going to be quite honest, to get the right people here to do anything about it.
Yeah, well, if the system goes down, it, you can, you can be put on hold for a long time with Stanley, security, yeah. You can be put on hold for a long time because I've had that happen. Whenever there's been bad weather or
Just get it done.
Yeah, I'm
I don't care, I'll just
Okay, I'll tell Greg, to go ahead for this building.
The other one, but it doesn't sound like we need them, so. Need a motion, go and do that then?
No, not really, I just wanted to know where you guys stood on it.
Is it coming out maintenance, capital improvements?
I'll try to get it out of his maintenance accounts, it's only fourteen hundred.
Greg will like that.
There's another email I can send.
Sorry, Greg.
Done.
Okay.
Down to two thousand dollars.
Yeah, now emails. Speaking of, I thought today would be a good time since we talked to Randy about insurance. Christie, you know, talked to you guys about that wellness situation and trying to start it countywide to get everybody involved per building. She had sent me this email, thinking that this email coming from the commission would be better. It's basically to take this little short survey for all of our employees to take. And I just want to know if you guys are okay with me sending it out.
I still think we need to do the Biggest Loser kind of like. I think it'd be fun.
Yeah, we could do that.
She's talked about different things.
Capital Region in on that?
Are you talking about weight or other?
He's trying.
We could tie that in with psychiatric, you know, we could, we could really
I don't have a comeback right now.
Is this, is this going out, is this going out on paper, Debbie, or is this going out email or what?
Marriage is
And then all they have to do is click that site.
I don't know if he was going there or not, I think he knows I don't care.
How do we know if, can we make everybody do this?
No, no, you're going to have some who don't want to participate.
No, but I don't mind sending a letter out and telling them, hey, you know, here's some stuff if you want to look into, you know, some ideas. You know, it's simple stuff.
If you want to raise in the future, please take the survey. Well, I mean, if we don't have good data, I mean, how are we supposed to make good decisions for the employees?
But now self-fund it, we have a lot of good information about, you know, what we can horn in on. I mean, if you want a carrot and a stick, you know, you could talk about doing that with, you know, with the premiums on the health insurance, you know, making them take a physical. Or charging more for the ones that smoke, you know, but that's up to you guys.
I think if the government, we're, we are, have to be careful about collecting the personal information and certain answers might be construed as a Fourth Amendment violation. And also too, the other thing you have to be careful about is if you're collecting this information and it's in your possession
Health department.
Well, the Cole County Health Department?
Yes.
I just, I'm
It's not, you don't put a name or anything, it's just
Okay, so it's anonymous?
Yes. But I, I mean, I like the carrot and a stick scenario just because, you know, we're I mean, you got to get people engaged because this is their benefit and it, it's basically their money. And so, I mean, you know, if we make them do a physical, if, if, you know, we ask them to fill this out when they do the physical or something, I mean, but It's just like all this information that Randy gave us today, it doesn't have a name associated with it. But we can, we can, for instance, take a look at everybody that has diabetes, diagnosed diabetes and they're on this medication. And, you know, I'm good with diabetic medication, but for certain people that are taking specialty drugs or something, we can take a look at making them pay a bigger portion of that specialty medication or whatever.
I think you have to make that, put that in your insurance plan, and I don't think, I mean, when you're talking about drugs to treat diabetes, are you talking about tying those drugs to a particular individual?
No. No.
I'm just
Well, and I think that's why Christie wants the list for me of medications, I was apprehensive at first for sharing any of that. I, I would share that, what type of medicines we're on, so, how she explained to me is then she would target training classes. She would charge luncheons for, you know, prediabetes, how do you handle it, how do you make your life better? And, and we can do that kind of stuff for wellness countywide. Can we make people come? That's up to you, I don't think you can. I think we want to approach it as, we're here to make them healthier, we're here to, you know, encourage them, but the carrot and the stick comes with a premium. And if you want to do something, you know, when we renew, then we can do something then.
I think you need to include that in the email, that it's, you know, we're promoting their health and wellbeing as well as this could affect the long-term health cost. So
I would suggest that you send a, something to the elected officials when you send that survey out or before you send that out, you know
Did you see this, Larry?
No, I hadn't.
All it is is saying, what do you want in this?
But I mean, I can make sure, for me to make sure that my employees fill it out and return it or respond to the question.
Well, you'll get one at the same time, I'll give it to everybody.
There's a lot of things, yeah, there's a fitness mile laid out, you see a lot of the state employees on their break in the morning that walk and you'll see them again in the afternoon to just walk. It's
They're imitating the legislature.
We're going to do a county five K every month, we'll have winners and losers. This survey doesn't have anything weird?
No, it's
Not with, not with UMR branch, we did it with United Healthcare, we had that Well, they do a discount, they do a discount if you're a non-smoker or if you're, and if you do a health plan, even the city has it, they'll take, well, they charge everybody thirty dollars. And if you take this health and wellness class and you show that you're in a fitness group, that they won't charge you the thirty dollars. So, yes, people do do that. But I don't know exactly what all the rules are.
Well, I think you would be better off doing this
You work every day?
Well, that's absolutely legally how you have to frame it, because if you penalize people, you get in big trouble.
Right, so I think it goes
But there are different brackets for smokers versus non-smokers.
I'm not, what it is, is you get an incentive if you don't do that.
You get an incentive because you get to pick the plan that costs you less than the smoker's plan would cost you a lot.
Well, actually Debbie, legally, I mean, there are two plans, but it is, we will pay X more towards your premium if you don't do this. Do they have any for tanning and eating red meat?
Yeah, no, no, not yet. So you guys have any problem with me sending that out?
No, I think it's a good idea, and then you might, like I said, add that something in there about it could affect long-term health costs downline and just trying to, we're trying to keep it affordable and trying to promote health and wellbeing. They at least need to go for like a jog before they go get their double cheeseburgers.
I'm just wondering if we couldn't
You run about six miles, you have ice cream and pizza, couple beers, it's awesome.
I'm just wondering if we couldn't include some of the results that we heard today from Randy, you know, you know, we're, we partially self-funded in two thousand and fourteen, the county saved over four hundred thousand dollars.
I mean, I could, but
I mean, you don't think that should be information that, that is given to
Well, it's public information, it's not
Well, I realize that, but ninety percent of our employees aren't going to
What did Larry just say after he heard that? What did Larry just say? They want to raise.
Well, and that's, that's a direct correlation, I mean, that four hundred thousand dollars is a direct correlation to what we're able to do at the end of the year. I mean, you know, if, if we had that twenty-nine percent increase that we, we were going to see that one year, I mean, we might not have been able to give any raises.
But I don't think your changing insurance brought about that savings.
And I, what are you going to do next?
Changing plans brought about the savings, but it didn't, that plan didn't change anybody's health circumstances or how they
And what are you going to do next year?
How they were living, you know.
When we have a bad year and we've given that money out and we didn't keep the reserve, you know what I mean, so
I, I would think the thing you want to point out of the information that Randy gave you is where we were, where the county was high at and, you know, what areas that These are where we see that the county needs to improve in.
Well, I want to bring Christie into this, this was her idea, she wants to, you know, do this wellness and it belongs to
Capital Region's doing that, they did that among their employees too, it's something we can borrow, I, I do like the idea of the Biggest Loser, we could run that and do that in January or something after the holidays or
They've done that at the health department, she's, I don't think she's looking at doing something.
Yeah, she's done it at the health department, so Yeah. You don't, it's just, it's just
No, we're talking about ways to
It's just, it's just
Raise money for United Way, last year the city kind of blew us out of the water with them on Monday day rates compared to what we raised, so we were trying to come up with ideas to raise more money at county level. We've been tossing around different, different things like penny wars or barbecue or something, so we just looked at each other and said, you know, if there's a way we could incorporate some kind of wellness program and raise money for the United Way, that would be awesome.
For every pound you lose, I'd give so much money, up to a certain value.
The winner gets half of it or something.
Yeah. Do it on a
I think that's a great idea.
Do it how many pounds, how many pounds you lose.
Health and then you're also money towards United Way, you heard Sam, he'll donate dollars.
Up to, up to a certain amount, that's, I would do that, I would do that.
Why put a ceiling on it?
How much are you going to lose, Jeff? How much are you going to lose?
I don't have much more.
But we could, I bet, we could do
Somebody was watching.
No.
We could do losing so much per pound total. Yeah.
It's EMS that's watching.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it would be a great idea.
Yeah. I think have some fun, make, make it, make it kind of fun.
Yeah, let us know what you need to work on, try to do something with that.
Well, like I said, our other idea was some kind of penny war and the price would be down state future to outside of the building.
The second story.
For how long?
Yeah.
For how long?
I don't know, maybe an hour.
I'm kind of claustrophobic. So being taped up and not being able to do
But you got to get some other people to do it with you so we can like go down.
You got anything else?
Yeah, I want to make sure.
I'd rather be shot with a paint gun.
Yeah.
We talked about giving you a shirt with a dart gun, everybody got dart guns and they got to
Paint pellets?
I'll do the paint pellets, I get to wear a cup and a mask and go like
The only other thing I have
Winner gets one shot.
The only
Okay, okay, Deb, come on.
One, maybe two or three winners, I got at least let the bruises wear off each week. Cause those look like bite marks and sometimes it It doesn't look right.
Okay, the other, the only other thing I have is the email that Christie sent out to you guys on April twenty-nine about the one open position of the employee that's retiring after thirty-seven years here. And the difference is she was a permanent part-time person and Christie was wanting to make that position a full-time position. Do you want her to come talk to you guys about that or are you guys okay with that? Salary money-wise, it's probably not very much difference because again, that lady had been here for so long, turning her from a thirty-two to a forty, yes, it probably will cost maybe three to four thousand more a year because we were already paying for the benefits, so. Are you guys interested in having her up here or would you want to give her the blessing on that?
What was this pay form that we just signed?
That is for that one position that we talked about the other day.
So this was just moving one?
This was actually one of the existing coming up to the one that was moved up into the finance, so then that still leaves the bottom one open as far as we
I trust Christie, I, I'm fine with her recommendation, I think she's
Wasn't this what we talked about before?
No, she didn't have this one, this was the one he was talking about with raising somebody up to the finance, raising somebody else up to the clerk and leaving that bottom clerk open for three or four months and six months to see how it went. This is another position that has been a thirty-two hour position, permanent part-time, that she wants to now replace when this person leaves with a full-time.
In general, I'm fine with it because she eliminated the other position.
Right.
And we were saving a lot more money than this four thousand.
What is this, this thirty-two hour position, was this funded by a grant at one time?
I'm not, I'm sure some of her hours are being able to be billed to different programs, but is she fully funded? No. As far as I know. But I'm sure they can bill it out on other, whatever she does, but she doesn't already.
How many other part-timers she have over there, I mean, is this going to be some, she's going to bring four more up here and say, I want to make these full-time or is this
Traditionally, she is one of the very last permanent part-time, we don't really offer any permanent part-time anymore, we have, I think one at Public Works is the only other one we have. Kind of want to get away from that and, you know, what we've been moving towards.
The only other part-time people at the health department are fully funded by
Just so I'm getting at is, okay, she just saved this money by promoting somebody to office manager from within and we eliminate a position, we move Uh, just so I'm getting at is, okay, she just saved this money by promoting somebody to office manager from within, and we eliminated a position, we moved somebody up, and then now we're gonna make this one full-time, so we should be able to do it with one less person, and twenty thousand dollars less in salary expenses. But if we keep adding somebody that's full-time, pretty soon we're gonna eat it all up, all the savings we had, so. That's the only one, I'm good with it.
I mean, the only problem that I have is that as this grant funding continues to go away, we continue to absorb the cost and keep these people on, and so, you know, I don't, I don't know where all that falls, and so that's what I would like to see is, was this a position that we added because we had grant funds available, and we added the position, and now that the grant funds have gone away, or we, you know, or, or some of these other positions that, that, you know, maybe we've added these programs because there was grant funding. Well, I mean, that's a, that's a million dollars a year to Kell County residents to fund the Health Department, probably more than a million. Um, so, you know, it's, it's a huge expense, and, you know, when we're getting reimbursed for some of that stuff, it's fine. When we're not getting reimbursed for some of it, yeah, maybe we can't continue those, those services or at those levels, so. Um, I'm not, I'm not trying to micromanage Christie, but I'm just trying to look at the, at the dollars.
And she would probably be, if you want to talk about more of that specific, she'd be better to come up here and talk about it herself, as far as that goes, before you guys make a decision.
Have her come up, it's just, she can answer these questions. I don't.
Okay, I will.
Anything else?
What about LV's position? Apparently, somebody said it was okay for him to do it. That was kind of along the same lines.
Yeah, I did see that email, I can't, um-
I saw it, too, and then I saw Chris said, I think he said he was okay about you, and then all of a sudden Larry saying, alright, thanks, it's done. And I was like, I only saw one person say okay.
I told him, I ran into, I ran into him in the parking lot.
You can't do that kind of stuff in a parking lot, should start putting it on the agenda, then, so we know what's going on.
I mean, unfortunately, people want to know, and then they ask you guys, and then sometimes, uh, you know, that's fine, we can tell them. And as long as you all agree, tell them, they have to bring it right here, we can't talk about this.
I just don't know what's going on here, because we got okay, I got one okay, and then it's done, so.
Well, I think maybe he didn't, he cornered Sam, too, then, so.
Alright, I won't sign it, then.
It's kind of hard to-
I didn't say okay, you all said okay, I'll let you all sign it.
I think Jeff's point is that, you know, we need you to communicate by email, so we know what's going on.
Well, and I think nobody needs to respond to them, the email, you maybe just forward it to me and say, put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I, I think, I think maybe it ought to come on the agenda.
Our approval is when we get the salary approval sheet and we sign it.
Yes.
And so if he wants to, he can just send it through, and say, well, here it is, I'm gonna give him a raise, and if you don't want to sign it, then we can talk about it, or whatever, but. That's why I say, okay, by me, go ahead and send it through, I don't need more explanation, I don't want to waste time sitting up here like we're doing now.
But if it involves, uh, the, there's not enough money in the budget, I'm gonna ask you again, with a budget transfer, to transfer money. And again, that's our policy, is not to transfer in and out, unless I come to you guys for approval of payroll accounts.
It just hurt my feelings, because I didn't know what's going on.
Sorry.
Alright, let's move on, I made my point.
Do we have any other issues?
Debbie or anybody. Okay, what was, what's it do with the Barbara Buescher, Bescher, whatever her name is, properties, I'm getting some emails on that.
That goes back to our long-range planning, where Steve Coursemire called her.
I saw that part, Bobby, what are we, what are we looking, are we gonna talk about that, is that gonna be on the agenda?
It's on our, that's part of that long-range planning meeting on the fourteenth.
I had Steve, uh, I, I, yeah, I emailed Steve, I mean, I, we looked at those properties at one time, and I just had Steve try to figure out which properties she had that were in close proximity, and I think Melissa's got something on GIS, or something kind of mapped, yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's something we can look at, but, I mean, obviously, she's gonna want us to purchase those properties, and then we're gonna have to-
I don't think there's anything we could really use, it'd be something, you've got lots, you could tear the buildings down, and-
Well, we will look at them at one time, and turn, turn it down, and then build a building on it, so.
Yeah.
Turn, she's got-
Just didn't know exactly what, if that's gonna be on the agenda, we can talk about that, then. I didn't go to that BOE training yesterday, I never really heard much about it, Chris forwarded, but I already made other plans, so. And I was gonna ask him if he went, I forgot too long ago.
I guess he's not brought that contract back over yet.
I didn't understand Jill's email about the professional services, what, did that ever mean anything?
I think it just kind of clarified the lines of what's professional services and what isn't, they just kind of clarified the definition of professional.
Okay, do we need to, I mean, has it changed anything that we're doing?
Clear language that could determine one way or the other.
Clear language of attorney's rule? Okay, alright, I just, I didn't want to delete you before we figured out what they were for, if it's just clarifying some stuff. Alright, that's all I had.
I just want to- Just pass around this about Marilyn, so, it's pretty good.
Yeah.
Administrator.
Yeah.
Nope.
What is it?
Greg, do you, do you have anything?
Blair dinner, I guess she was on it.
And I moved, we recessed until four thirty P M.
What was it?
Blair dinner. I guess, is that the honor?
It's kind of like the Lincoln, it's kind of like-
James T. Blair Award.
Yeah.
Like the Lincoln days.
So she got some kind of award. She got an award from the public administrators, too, uh, a couple of years ago.
Okay, recessed, I saw that already.
Alright, I, I was just curious what it was, I don't need to see it, cool. So, did we recess?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't vote.